Good evening and welcome to the May 3, 2023 City Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldisheld.
All right. Mr. Duffy, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to ask our clerk, and make a note while we're doing that, that next week is Municipal Clerk Week, May 8 through the 15th, so I'm going to ask our city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you for that recognition, Mr. Mayor. With that, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 3, City of Roseville City Council Meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, please help yourself. They're located at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits our city council from engaging in conversations or having a back-and-forth discussion with items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For public comment, each speaker will be provided with three minutes at the podium on non-agenda items. The maximum allotted time for this section is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on agendized items, those appearing on tonight's agendas, will have five minutes to express their comments and concerns to our city council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, please conclude your comments. Lastly, if you address the city council, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, we thank you for your civic participation tonight and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Great. We're going to start off the evening with a couple of presentations, and I'd like Katrina Six to join me at the dais. Where's Katrina?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
You know, it's a real, and you wrote all this, by the way, I'm pretty sure. So, let's just full-disclosure it, but you know what? I want to turn and I want to look at our public service employees because we are recognizing public service, this is Public Service Recognition Week, and whether it's our law enforcement, our police firefighters, the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office, we are only, our quality of life is a team game, and it very much involves our public employees. So, in honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and thus, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation functioning, and whereas public employees take oaths of, oaths to perform their jobs, and whereas many public servants, including police, firefighters, military personnel, border patrol officers, embassy employees, and healthcare professionals risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world, and whereas public servants, public servants include utility workers, that does include garbage workers, right?
Yeah, it does.
Maybe later. I was a garbage worker for a municipality many decades ago. Inspectors, engineers, teachers, scientists, social workers, safety inspectors, dispatchers, laborers, parks, recs, and library workers, computer technicians, and countless other occupations. And day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. So now therefore, I Bruce Haldisheld, on behalf of my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim May 7 through the 13th, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week, and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of employees at all levels. And I think I, I think every one of us up here have received not only questions from constituents, but compliments from constituents. I was at South Kirby last night, the Neighborhood Association, and they certainly appreciate what our parks, recs, and library folks do, and you know, our firefighters and, and law enforcement were there as well. So, we're going to recognize you and there's a photo op somewhere in there, right? Isn't there a photo op for you?
No, that's okay. I'm on camera, that's good enough. Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Very briefly.
We've got a long meeting.
I know you guys have a long meeting, so we decided to keep this short. Good evening, councilmember and mayor. I am Katrina Six, I work in the City Clerk's Department. I am here on behalf of our Employee Recognition Committee. I am the chair, and I wanted to just say a few words to thank all of you. I wanted to just start by saying that I am here on behalf of 1,800 full-time and part-time employees that work for the city. We would like to thank you for your recognition. It means a lot to staff to be public servants. We love giving back to our community. We love positively affecting the lives of each and every resident in Roseville, and we also love to help this city thrive. Our office answers calls each and every day. We direct people to every service that they could potentially need, and it is with great pleasure that we do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like this probably, do you want to do this one?
No.
Because we have, Ronan Gobden? Any one of these small business owners up here could be doing this, but it's my pleasure to do this. Whereas, and this is Small Business Month, and you are all over, you're a shutterfly. You're out there photographing small businesses throughout the city and documenting their contributions, so thanks for that. Whereas since 2019, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce annually declares May as National Business Month, recognizing the critical, critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas Roseville recognizes the many contributions small businesses bring to our local economy and adds value to the quality of life of our residents while attracting people to our area, increasing and supporting growth. And whereas there are more than 33.2, 33.2 million small businesses in the U.S. and more than half of Americans either own or work for a small business, and small businesses create about two-thirds of new jobs in the U.S. each year. And whereas Roseville's small business owners have a passion for what they do, when we support small businesses, jobs are created, local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas Roseville's economic development strategy includes goals to support partnerships, entrepreneurships, small businesses by building a supportive ecosystem that creates reliable pathways for entrepreneurs to confidently start and grow successful businesses. And whereas the U.S. Chamber of Commerce's goal is to help small businesses and startup owners begin and succeed in their businesses, and whereas in recognition of the hard work, ingenuity, and dedication of small businesses and their contributions to the economy, the Roseville Chamber of Commerce and the City of Roseville's Economic Development Department join in this national, national effort to celebrate small businesses. Therefore, I, on behalf of the council, do proclaim May 2023 as National Small Business Month, and encourage and support of this national effort so that Roseville's small businesses can do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure their communities remain vibrant, as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. So, and this one gets a photo opportunity. We're going to come up here and I'm going to, I'm going to enlist Devin because he's really good at this.
Oh, which, I mean Ryan, Ryan, Devin.
Bruce.
I'll do it.
I need your face.
You know what Gina's going to do this?
Oh, you got it.
You're a good text.
Standing up.
Just come around or stand up.
You want to come down?
Oh, wait, where, where do you want us first?
Want us to come down or what?
Thank God it's not Kevin the board.
Thank you. We have, we have the only five-star chamber?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rana Galdwan, and I'm the CEO of the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce, proudly representing about 1,200 businesses here in the City of Roseville. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the leadership of the city, from our city council to our mayor, to our city manager and his staff, the economic development team, and everyone at the city. I have worked in five different communities, and I say I am very proud to say that we are able to do our job even better because we have the support of our local government. We as a chamber work hard every day to ensure that our small businesses are supported with resources, connecting with each other, being able to connect with grants and opportunities and training, and we could only do this with more support. And it's very interesting that this morning, I was actually sharing with one of my staff members, that what took me three years to try to do in a community, it took me six years, six months here to achieve funding for it to launch a new workforce development initiative, bringing the U.S. Chamber Program to train our local businesses on better workforce development initiative. So my gratitude to all of you for your hard work, your dedication, and your leadership to ensure that Roseville remains not just a great place to live, but also a great place to do business here in California. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, all right, thank you, Rana. All right, now we will, I'm going to ask the clerk to announce public comment, and this is for non-agenda items. I guess I actually did it, didn't I?
Yes, then we have one.
And Teresa. Help me with this, Teresa.
Jimminani.
Teresa G.
Teresa Jimminani, 708 Garcia Avenue. I'd like to ask tonight for some attention to the parking garage next door, the Oak Street Parking Garage. I frequent that building several times, that parking garage several times a month, and particularly at night. I've had a conversation tonight with the chief regarding the dangers inside the parking garage, but I'd like to talk tonight and ask your help in the dangers outside the parking garage. There is no designated crosswalk from the area near the elevators to the corner of the building. So when we go to cross, we don't know where to cross, where we will be noticed the best, and there's no ability for us to be noticed or to know that a car is coming down the side of the building. I would request that there be some kind of a light that flashes, some kind of a notice put at the beginning when cars turn off of Vernon Street along the side of the Masonic Lodge Building and the RTAA, so that when we're attempting to cross from the parking garage to the sidewalk, we know if a car is coming. I personally am averse to being a human dodgeball, and I have been many times. Now that spring is here and the activity in the parking garage has taken up, I personally don't party in the back of my pickup truck, but I have to deal with all the cars coming along the side of the building that are rushing to get into that parking garage or rushing to get out. And some ability to know that a car is coming, some ability to feel that I might be seen and not have to hurry would be nice. And it's not just I and others that attend the lodge meetings, but also the families and the children that attend RTAA that are having to deal with that same issue. We don't want a child to be hurt there. None of us want to be hurt there. We utilize that parking garage because it's a great resource. It was wonderfully appreciated when you put it in. It is full on a Friday and Saturday night. I don't allow anyone to go to the top floor alone any longer after my meetings at night, but just getting from the building to the parking garage can be dangerous. And if you could give us some kind of light system, some kind of notification system, anything that would give us some heads up that a car is coming, usually at 30 miles an hour down the side of the building, it would be nice to know. I just, I can't run fast enough anymore. My left knee does not allow it. So if we could have some kind of a simple notification system, something that reminds a car that there's someone crossing the street, or tells us a car is coming along the building, which is more in your wheelhouse than any other higher-tech opportunities, that would be helpful, and we would appreciate some attention to that, that danger of crossing from the garage to the side of the building. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our chief's attention. I saw a lot of notes being scribbled here by our city manager, so I'm sure it'll be looked into. All right, William?
Do I have to hit this button here?
No, we got it here.
All right, I only have, I'm sorry, I only have three minutes, so I have to go fast. My name's William, AKA Godzilla. I'm an advocate for the homeless people. And, oh, by the way, she's talking about cars trying to crash into people. People see me riding on the side of the road with my backpack on, they know I'm homeless, and these MAGA head Trump people are fucking, excuse my language, I'm sorry. Strike that from the record, please, my honor. Okay. Yeah, these guys, they're not trying to literally hit me, but they're trying to like, go right next to me and scare me to where, you know, where I'm, you know, I won't say it, but, um, anyway, that, I just, she was talking about that, so. Anyway, my real issue is this. There's a law in place that went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court did not hear it, supposedly because the Supreme Court agreed with the lower court's decision, which is actually a bunch of shit because they just want, they didn't want to be publicly known as.
Your language.
I can't say S-H-I-T. Can I say C-R-A-P?
Keep going, William.
Anyway, but I'm down to 147 now, so I have to talk fast, fast, fast. Okay, listen. Yeah, the real reason I'm here is because there's a law in place that went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court declined to hear it ostensibly because they're saying that they agreed with the lower court's decision, which is a bunch of C-R-A-P. Really, they didn't want to be publicly known as hating homeless people, okay? And what happened was, there's a law in place right now, you can look it up if you don't believe me. I didn't believe it myself, but you cannot kick a homeless person off public, or you can't tell them to move or go away on public property unless it's a public safety issue. Now, some of them, by the hospital down here, by the Blue Ravine Creek, or whatever the hell it is, can I say H-E-L-L? Okay, thank you.
Keep going.
Uh, yes, and over here by the hospital, I think it's called Blue Ravine Creek. I've heard through the grapevine, I was going to go down there myself, but I'm, I had things to do today, believe it or not. And anyway, long story short, I've heard that through the grapevine, they've been systematically kicking people out of that particular area. Against, against the law, of course, they're saying they had hypodermic needles and mountains of trash, unsafe trash and all that kind of thing. But if they, my point is this, if they had a lawyer, none of those guys would be getting kicked out of there, okay? That's my only point that I wanted to make today, and, oh, I want to thank the mayor too for letting me get my bike. I forgot my keys, I couldn't find my keys to my lock. I said, I went up to the mayor, I said, hey, listen, can I put my bike inside? And he goes, well, you guys have to talk to Mike, the security guard. Anyway, thank you for letting me get my bike in here, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, bye-bye.
Thanks. Anyone else who would like to make comment, public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, and I'll ask the clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public requests to have an item pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Yes, sir?
May we, may we call item 711?
Yes, so, so.
Make the request. Yes, and make the request first, right?
Yes.
What's your request?
My request is to pull item 711 for a brief comment.
Okay.
And let me consult the city attorney's office.
That's fine, we're going to, we're going to vote on the rest of the consent calendar, and then we'll get to that item.
We're going to vote on whether we're going to pull that, right?
No, a member of the public has the right to pull.
Very good. We got clarification on that. So, are there any other requests to pull items off the consent calendar? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you?
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, so for, so tonight on consent, we do have for your consideration items 7.1 to 710, and item 712 to 7.23, with item 711 being pulled for further discussion. If I can have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldisheld.
Yes.
Thank you, item 711.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Ken Graham, I'm the executive director with the Western Plaster Waste Management Authority, joint power authority between Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, and the county to provide solid waste management services. And so regarding item 711, and as you embark on planning of this new facility, we believe in this open discussion to make sure that we are all serving our citizens to the best we can in our individual jurisdictions as well as the whole. So we believe open dialogue is part of that, in supporting that 45-year partnership that we've had. Your council may be aware, the WATMA, which is the Western Plaster Waste Management Authority, recently approved our waste action plan for the next 40, 50 years, and actually beyond that, in terms of planning our facilities. It was an extensive, multi-year planning effort, extensive public outreach to make that happen with your staff. We came up with a very robust plan to ensure the long-term stability of the landfill, as well making sure we meet SB 1383, the organic diversion guidelines that are out there. One of the first major pieces we did as part of that was getting a new operator onboard, FCC Environmental, that started last year. They're embarking with the partnership, $120 million upgrade of our facility to make sure that we're going to triple our, our facility's diversion rate. We are going to make sure that we adhere to 1383, which we all need to do in this region, and make sure that the safety and that the resource of the landfill remains there for future generations. So with that, really the request as you are, as you're embarking on this, is that, hey, these decisions will affect us all. We're asking that maybe we can be part of the discussions with your staff, talking about what those issues are, and maybe we'll be learning something through this process also. And, and we believe it'll lead, this robust discussion will lead to much better decision-making, both for us as well as your citizens, because it is a big undertaking. You're talking about spending a lot of money now, doing this planning, and we applaud that effort. That's it, and I appreciate the time of you listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Is there any other public comment?
Is there any other public comment on item 7.11? None, I'll bring it back to the council and ask what the council's pleasure is. Will you want a motion?
So here we go. So on item 711, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-150, approving a professional design services agreement by and between the City of Roseville and HDR Engineering, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll begin our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldisheld.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Again, discussion of our ordinances, item 8.1, Sierra Vista Specific Plan, Westbrook Boulevard Reimbursement Agreement and Budget Adjustment, and, good evening. Good night, Mr. Isom. Good evening, Mr. Isom.
I'm Mike Isom, your Development Services Director. With me is Mark Stout, Engineering Manager and City Engineer. This item is a unique solution to finally completing the remaining segment of Westbrook Boulevard that will provide a continuous roadway segment from Baseline Road to the south, all the way through Amoruso Ranch to the north. I'd like to thank John Moyer Construction in particular for agreeing to help us out on this one, Attorney's Office certainly for helping us to draft the agreement, but this was Mark's idea, and he's done most of the heavy lifting on it. He's going to give you the presentation this evening.
Thanks, Mike. So, so this vicinity map here shows the project location in green, a segment of Westbrook Boulevard between, south of Pleasant Grove Boulevard and north of Baseline Road. The solid blue lines show existing roads, Pleasant Grove, Westbrook, Vista Grande, Baseline, Fittiamont, as well as gaps in the current infrastructure in Santucci, the, the, the green of Westbrook Boulevard, gap in Vista Grande, as well as the intersections at Market and Baseline and Santucci and Baseline, which are currently under construction and will be finished this summer. Next slide, please. This, this slide shows the solid blue lines are completed segments of Blue Oaks Boulevard, Pleasant Grove, Baseline, Fittiamont, and what's this, what this is demonstrating is that without the connection of Westbrook Boulevard, much of the traffic, that traffic that wants to go west on Baseline Road to get to Sacramento is having to feed down Blue Oaks Boulevard and Pleasant Grove Boulevard to the east to get to Fittiamont and then come south down to Baseline. south down to Baseline to go westbound. Uh, what this is causing is, is extra volumes and delays at the intersections of Blue Oaks and Fittimit, especially Pleasant Grove and Fittimit is experiencing longer delays because of this, a- as well as, uh, Baseline and Fittimit. Um, it should be, it should be noted that the Sierra Vista Specific Plan allowed for build-as-you-go construction, um, and this is what led to some of the, the gaps in infrastructure within the plan area. Um, though this allowance was made to help facilitate development within the plan area, it has also created these gaps in the network, um, as you see on the slide. Uh, the most significant being, uh, the segment of Westbrook Boulevard for those reasons that I just mentioned. Um, the segment of Westbrook Boulevard will, uh, provide a continuous connection between Baseline Road, um, north, uh, north of Blue Oaks into the currently developing Amoruso Specific Plan. Um, in addition to the traffic issues, constructing Westbrook Boulevard, um, will not only help alleviate some of the congestion at those intersections I mentioned, um, but also provide a more direct route for emergency response vehicles into portions of Sierra Vista, uh, as well as provide a better redundancy and reliability for Roseville Electric customers, um, as the project includes, uh, bringing, uh, electrical conduits up into the, um, Sierra Vista substation. Next slide, please. Uh, based on the current single-family home absorption rate within the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, it's anticipated that it could be up to three years until private development would trigger the obligation to build the, the current missing section of Westbrook Boulevard. Uh, due to the need for better roadway continuity in West Roseville, staff explored options to accelerate this construction of Westbrook Boulevard, and the result of this effort is the reimbursement agreement before you, tonight, that was negotiated with, uh, JMC. Uh, in simple terms, the, the city will advance funds for future developer obligated improvements, and JMC will reimburse the city in full as they continue to develop single-family homes within the plan area. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, funding for this project will occur via the four funds shown on the current slide. All CIF and electric rate stabilization funds utilized on the project will be reimbursed to the city in full over time. Um, the Sierra Vista, uh, Specific Plan, TMF set aside, and electric funds are paying for city obligated improvements that the city would need to pay for, regardless when the project moves forward. Um, though it is anticipated that all funds should be reimbursed within two to three years, there is a backstop in the agreement that ensures that the city will be repaid regardless of future development. Uh, lastly, uh, though the engineer's cost estimate for this project, um, estimated, the CIF-funded portion would be around 3.2 million, staff is asking for 4 million, um, to cover any increase in actual bid amounts that come in, uh, as well as any change orders on the project. Uh, next slide. Uh, based on the information presented tonight and the evaluation, uh, in the council communication, staff recommends the city council take the actions listed on this slide. Uh, that concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
Right, thank you, Mark. Um, anyone on the council have questions? Uh, Councilmember Rucucci?
No, I, just a comment, maybe. Um, that ability to have, uh, that main road in there is vital. I mean, health, safety, uh, people getting back and forth to work, just another way to, uh, to, uh, travel is, and this is a good plan.
Councilmember Mendoza, questions? Questions? No questions, all right. All right. Councilman Albert, questions?
No questions.
All right. You know what, um, I, I've thoroughly reviewed this, and I don't have any questions. I'm gonna open it for public comment. I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back. If there are no additional questions from the council, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion. Oh, you want to, I'm sorry, comments, yes, thanks. I have questions here, yeah, I get confused.
I live, I live in this area, um, on the map, and I, I know that this is a huge, huge desire for several different reasons that were mentioned. The people down in the corner by Baseline, they just feel isolated. Baseline's the only way in and out of their whole neighborhood, including police and fire. They have to go around the horn, they call it, to, to get to their neighborhood. And then when they're there, they have to go back to get anywhere else. So, I'm excited about the, the emergency response time that this would provide. And then all the commuters that take Baseline to 99, they, they all have to funnel around, and it, it's talked about all the time. This is probably, other than when are we getting to Trader Joe's, it's probably the most common question, I think. Um, just over the years, it's always been an issue. And so, it's so exciting to see this finally be able to start. I know people are just gonna be so excited. So, I'm really appreciating the creativity in trying to get this done, instead of waiting for the housing development to finally connect it. So, it's nice that we're doing this for the community.
Yeah, and I want to beg indulgence of my colleagues. I have a comment that's kind of forming a question. So, the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, the fees that will go to fund this are not just those parcels that are vacant right now, but also, my understanding is, uh, fees from other, other, uh, projects that are immediately south of this connection. Because you said, at the beginning, the obligation is for this segment for those that are adjacent to it when they come forward, but-
Oh, yes.
Yeah, my understanding is that there would be fees collected from the unbuilt houses that are on the improved portion of that. Is, is that a correct understanding?
That's correct. There's, there's one large lot parcel that would trigger, um, the developer to have to build this segment, so one subdivision. Um, JMC, who we're entering into the agreement with, actually has 12 large lot parcels remaining in Sierra Vista, so as they pay their fees for any of those 12 lot parcels, it will go to pay back, um, this advancement.
Right, and I want to make sure that was on the record, because it's not just that immediate, but it's, yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. On item 8.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-157, approving reimbursement agreement by and between the City of Roseville and John Moyer Construction, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting ordinance number 6648, authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 2223 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. If I can have a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, next up on our agenda for this evening, thank you. Next up, uh, on our agenda this evening are special requests, reports, and presentations. Uh, the Measure B Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rick Duffy with the Citizens Oversight Committee, and I'm here with John Spade as well. And we're here to review our report to you for the, uh, 2022 fiscal year. You have the report in front of you, so I don't think we need to go over everything in there, but I would like to go over the seven bullet points in there. And just for everybody else attending, I'd like to just briefly go over what this is all about. It's regarding Measure B, and Measure B is a half-cent local sales and use tax, tax to protect Roseville's essential services, and was approved by voters in the November 6, 2018 election, with the expected annual revenue of 16 to 19 million dollars. And with that, we'll go to page two and, uh, go over the bullet points that are in our report. The first one is fiscal year 2122 resulted in 28.3 million in Measure B revenue, which was 7.2 more than budgeted. Actual Measure B revenues exceeded budget primarily due to the conservative approach in budgeting for major tax revenues to compensate for impacts to the COVID-19 pandemic and general economic recovery. The second, the committee notes that Measure B revenue is a general tax co-mingled with other general fund revenue and pulled for general fund expenditures. It is not possible to trace, trace specific expenditures back to the Measure B revenue. Third, general fund expenditures were 2.9 million less than budgeted. The bulk of this reduction was in salary savings from vacant positions. Next, police and fire departments spent virtually 100% of their budgets. Fifth, actual results for the year indicate a one-time budget surplus of 31.5 million. Staff prepared a memo to city council recommending general fund appropriations that align with the city council strategic plan. The council approved the recommended appropriations, including a $15 million increase to the Roseville Soccer Complex project budget toward their goal to enhance economic vitality by advancing sport tourism opportunities, including destination-type amenities. Sixth, the scorecard provided the committee with additional information in determining the level of services in comparison to the previous year. The scorecard indicates, and, that budgeted expenditures, staffing levels, and investment in reserves for fiscal year 2022 were comparable to those in the previous year. And lastly, the committee concludes that, based on the data provided by city staff and our analysis as described above, police, fire, public works, and parks, recreation, and library services were all maintained as evidenced by an increase in expenditures. The commission, committee also concludes that the fiscal year 2022 Measure B funds were used for their intended purposes. Are there any questions?
I'll ask the council if they have any questions. Mr. Duffy, uh, Pauline, uh, Councilmember Rucucci. No?
Thank you. That was good.
Uh, Mendoza?
Thank you for a thorough report.
Right.
No questions. Councilman Albert? No. All right, I'll open it up for public comment.
How much is that soccer complex gonna cost? 50 million?
The soccer complex?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know the exact-
I'm sorry, William, you need to come to the podium.
Switch. Oh, come to the podium? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You know, that, that soccer complex is gonna cost 50 million, is that correct?
It's a soccer complex.
That, that's why I said soccer complex.
I, I don't know if these-
You should, you should be probably directing-
Come up, William, right here.
Okay. Oh.
Toward us.
50 million, right?
Right, at least.
You realize how many homeless people you can house with 50 million dollars?
Okay.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need soccer right now. We need, we need homeless, we need homeless to dissolve. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Are there any other public comments this evening? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, inquire if the council has any additional comments or questions on this. No?
Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Right. I want to thank you, Stephanie Hill, Catherine Kitchell, Megan Craftka, and John Spieth for serving on this committee. And, uh, I think we have a couple vacancies coming up, and I don't know if, uh, two of those folks are gonna reapply, but I sure, uh, you know, sure appreciate, um, you know, the, uh, the financial background that folks like yourself bring to this, and the scrutiny that it comes under, because I think that's part of making sure that, um, we are vigilant about how we, um, you know, take care of our funds. So, thank you very much for your service.
It's been our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, that was an information-only item, and no actions required. Uh, item 9.2, Long-Term Liabilities Update Pension and Other Post-Employment Benefits. Good evening, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Dennis Kaufman.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshell and city councilmembers. This agenda item is an update on the city's long-term liabilities for pensions and retiring medical, otherwise known as other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. This update's an important component of our budget development process, because pension and OPEB are significant employee benefit costs, and their related liabilities are significant on the city's balance sheet. I'll start with an update on pensions. Like most cities, retirement costs are one of our largest expenses. The city participates in the California Public Employees Retirement System, or CALPERS, and as a result, pension payments are a legal obligation, because the rules for CALPERS are built into state law. The city has to pay its contributions to CALPERS each year. The city and its employees have been very proactive in addressing pension costs over the past decade. Cost-reduction tools that have been established by the legislature have been implemented by Roseville, including the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, which reduce pension benefits for new employees. Roseville employees also contribute their full employee share of the cost based on CALPERS rules. And an important point about pension costs in California is that state law prohibits retroactive benefit reductions. Uh, there have been a series of court rulings establishing what they call the California Rule, uh, which means that pensions offered to an employee when they're hired become a vested right, protected by constitutional contract law, uh, which means that pension benefits, uh, for employees can only be cut if the reduction is offset by a comparable new benefit, which would eliminate any of the savings that would be generated. So, the legislature and CALPERS have made, uh, a number of significant changes to the pension system that in some cases have reduced the city's costs, and in other cases have increased the city's costs. Uh, the, the biggest one being the PEPRA, uh, which was passed in 2012, and it, which requires reduced pension formulas for employees hired after January 1st, 2013. CALPERS has also introduced something called smoothing, uh, during the Great Recession that helps, uh, employers like the city, because it gradually increases our contributions, uh, with the goal to fully fund our unfunded liabilities over a period of 30 years. It also helps, uh, minimize the volatility in our contributions that we have to make each year. And then most recently, CALPERS, uh, changed how we have to pay, uh, some of their actuarial losses, and they amortize that over 20 years instead of 30 years. And that has the effect of us having to pay higher contributions, because they're amortizing it over a shorter period of time. And I'll give you an example in a few minutes. So, this next slide shows a table with the annual cost of our pension benefits as a percentage of pay, and the number of active current employees by benefit group, based on the most recent actuarial report from CALPERS. Uh, as this table shows, the cost of pension benefits as a percentage of payroll is significantly lower for the employees that are hired with the PEPRA benefits. Um, most city employees are classified as miscellaneous, that's why the first two rows say miscellaneous. And then most police and fire employees are considered safety employees, and they have a different level of pension benefits. You can see that miscellaneous PEPRA employees continue, uh, to replace classic employees. That's why you see more PEPRA employees now than classic employees. Almost 60% of our miscellaneous employees now have the PEPRA benefit. And PEPRA safety employees, the, their number are also rising, but at, at a slower pace, because our public safety departments, uh, hire laterals from other agencies, and, uh, many of them have the classic, uh, formula instead of the PEPRA formula. So, the safety groups are a little slower to replace the classics with the PEPRA employees. Last year, I shared the good news that CALPERS earned a 21.3 positive investment return for fiscal year 21, and that additional investment revenue would increase our funded status and slow the growth in our pension costs. However, the CALPERS investment return for fiscal year 2022 was a negative 7.5%, which is a similar percentage off of their target, uh, rate of return, which is 6.8%. This investment loss will reduce our funded status, back to where it was pretty much two years ago, and increase the city's pension costs, starting in fiscal year 2024, 2025. As a reminder, CALPERS reevaluated their actuarial assumptions back in 2021, including the investment return target, and lowered it from 7% to 6.8%. And one of the impacts of this lowering of the discount rate is an increase to our annual cost, which they call the normal cost. So, that increases the city's pension contributions. It also increases the contributions for our PEPRA employees, uh, because they're required to pay 50% of the normal cost. So, based on the most recent CALPERS actuarial valuation, uh, which includes that good news of 21.3% from 2021, but does not include the bad news from 2022, our pension costs grew slower, and our safety costs there at the top actually declined, uh, partly due to the first additional discretionary payment, uh, that the city council approved. Uh, but I have a forecast coming up in a, in a couple slides that shows, uh, the forecasted contributions that includes the, the bad news from the investment loss from 2022. Um, so you can see here on this slide, the total, uh, pension contributions in the current fiscal year are about 50 million dollars, and in next fiscal year are higher, about 52 million dollars. So, based on the most recent actuarial report, um, this slide shows, uh, our unfunded liability and our funded ratio. The, the, that first row, accrued liability, represents the future pension benefits that have been earned by our employees for services already rendered. That's the accrued liability amount. The market value of assets is the investments that CALPERS holds to pay for those liabilities. And the unfunded liability is the amount that's not currently covered by investments. And the funded ratio is how much, uh, assets there are to pay for the liability. And you can see from June of 2020 to June of 2021, for the miscellaneous plan, the liability went down and the funded ratio went up, because they earned significant investment returns. Uh, but, we will see when we get the next actuarial report that that funded ratio will go back down from about 71%, closer back down to 63%. For the safety plan on this slide, similar story, uh, went up from about 66% to 76% because of that 21% investment return. When we get the next report, we'll see it'll go back down to somewhere about 67 or 68%. And then combined the miscellaneous and safety together, this total shows the city's total unfunded liability at June of 2021 was about 336 million dollars, with a 73% funded- unfunded liability at June of 2021 was about $336 million with a 73% funded ratio, and I anticipate it will go back down to about 65% when we get the next report. So this table presents the contribution rates for the current year, next year, and the forecast for the next five years. This is based on data provided by CALPERS, and it's using their Pension Outlook tool that allows us to forecast our costs and take into account that negative 7.5% investment return in 2022. As you can see, the contribution rate as a percentage of pay starts increasing again, and that's because CALPERS does that smoothing. They smooth or phase in those contribution increases to help us, to give us more time to adjust to higher contributions, and it also helps reduce our volatility in our contributions. Each of the changes from their investment gains or losses has a five-year ramp-up period, so that big loss in 2022 will ramp up and affect us slowly over five years, starting in fiscal year '24, '25 through fiscal year '28, '29. But based on this forecast tool, the city's pension costs are currently forecasted to peak in 2030, 2031, which is good news, which is eight years from now. But that assumes that they won't change any more of their assumptions and that their reality about their investment return brings an average of 6.8% positive return in the future. So if that fact pattern remains, we should peak in about 2030, 2031. The city council approved establishing a Section 115 pension trust last year with our updated pension funding policy. Section 115 is an Internal Revenue Code section that allows establishing a tax-exempt trust for government purposes. Staff are currently working on a request for proposals to select a trust administrator. The city's pension trust will be used to set aside resources irrevocably to meet future pension contributions or liabilities, and the trust will be used as a rate stabilization fund to ease budgetary pressure when we get to a time where pension contributions are increasing at a higher rate than our budget can absorb them. Staff will continue recommending steps towards the city council's strategic plan goal to address our pension liability. We will continue making recommendations to make additional discretionary payments to CALPERS to lower our pension costs and to increase our funded status. And as a reminder, the additional payment that we made this fiscal year will reduce future general fund pension costs by nearly $400,000 per year for 20 years. The other significant retirement obligation is OPEB, which is retiree medical benefits. The city established an OPEB trust fund more than a decade ago to set aside resources to fund the city's obligation and to invest those resources to earn investment income to help pay for the benefits, similar to pensions. The city also reduced retiree health benefits for tiers of new employees to reduce costs, and the city council adopted a formal OPEB funding plan to continue making contributions to fully fund the obligation. The city hires an OPEB actuary every two years to measure the city's liability and to calculate the actuarially determined contribution, which is used to pay benefits and increase the funded status of the plan. The most recent actuarial report for the city's OPEB plan was for June of 2021, and at that time, the unfunded liability was eighty-three million dollars with a funded ratio of about 60%. You see that that funded ratio went up from 44% to 60%, and that was primarily due to a 25.8% positive investment return during that fiscal year 2021. But like CALPERS, the portfolio had a significant loss in fiscal year 2022 that will increase the liability and lower the funded ratio. Our actuaries will start working on the next OPEB actuarial valuation report. It'll be as of June 2023, and we will have that later this year in time to update you early next year. This slide shows the discount rate or that investment target that we use for the OPEB plan is 6%, and our portfolio balance at the end of June of 2022 is $129 million, down from about $142 at the end of 2021 because of the return of negative 11% in the OPEB trust, and that was compared to the benchmark that our investment managers use of 11.36, so they did slightly better than our benchmark. The other important thing here on this chart is the far right. Since inception, our OPEB trust fund has earned a little bit more than 7%, and you can see the benchmark earned a little bit more than 6%, and that's why we use a 6% investment target. And so far, our trust fund has exceeded that target, and we'll continue to monitor that. So this graph, you've seen before, this was from the most recent actuarial report, and it has two good takeaways. The first one is that red line showing our funded status going up, up, up every two years when we've had new actuarial reports. The other interesting thing about this is the light blue bar is our retiree liability, and the light green bar is the active employee retire liability. And you can see the green bar is getting smaller and smaller, and that's because our active employees have a lower benefit for retiree medical than the people who have the higher benefits. And so that change in our benefits is having the effect of lowering our liability, and our contribution policy is bringing up that funded status. And as I mentioned before, we'll be having a new actuarial study done this fall for OPEB. So in conclusion, Roseville and its employees have been very proactive in addressing both pension and OPEB costs. Implementation of the PEPRA benefits is reducing the city's pension costs. City council has adopted a strategic plan goal to address pension liabilities after our general fund reserve targets are met, and our proposed budget for fiscal year '23, '24 that the city will be releasing in the next couple weeks will follow our council-adopted pension and OPEB funding policies and include recommendations for the city's third additional discretionary payment to CALPERS as well as another transfer to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund. And with that, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a couple for you, Dennis. The CALPERS board, how often do they review their investments and make changes? Is that every two years or?
They review their assumptions every two years and every three years because they have so many different assumptions that they look at, including demographics and mortality and all of those different things. The investment return assumption, I believe they do every three years, and they have a set schedule.
And then I remember reading something about this, our state legislatures are looking into something with CALPERS and just refresh my mind, working on different criteria for investments again.
Yes, there are proposals that come before the legislature every couple of years to look at whether CALPERS should not invest in certain types of companies. And right now, there's a proposal about fossil fuel companies. And so the CALPERS is looking at that, and the legislature are looking at that. And in our advocacy platform for the city of Roseville, we oppose CALPERS divesting from industries because if CALPERS is not making a return on their investments, then the city has to make additional contributions to fund our benefit program.
It hurts our employees.
That's right.
Retirees, and our just how to make good judgment.
Yeah, and the community.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza, questions?
Actually, one of the questions I had, Pauline touched on, but I have a follow-up. So the CALPERS board meets every three years. So what's the cycle on that? Did they just meet recently? Did that kickoff, did that meeting kickoff another three-year cycle when they took this huge loss? Or are they in between cycles or?
They actually meet regularly. They meet like every other month as a board, but they reevaluate some of the major actuarial assumptions like the investment discount rate on a two- or three-year cycle.
Okay.
So it's unrelated to their investment performance.
Because I'm just curious, are we aware or have they communicated to us? Have they switched from a more conservative to a more aggressive approach? I mean, that's a hell of a bath take. I mean, I just, it seems like there must have been some, something triggered that, right? Not just market conditions, because I mean, I know you can lose a lot in the market, but I mean, I'm just wondering, did they as a board or as an entity make some sort of change in their investments?
In every two- or three-year cycle, they do reevaluate their investment portfolio, their investment policy, what types of investments they're in. But if we go back and look at fiscal year '22, the market was significantly down.
Right. I'm just wondering, did '22, was that the, do we know if that was the beginning or the end of that three-year? I'm just, I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
They had made decisions during 2021 to lower the discount rate to 6.8%. And at that time, had made some small changes in their investment practices and policy, but nothing significant.
So what happened in '22 wouldn't have changed because that was predicated what their decision was in '21? They were just riding that decision out?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Councilman Albert? No questions. Vice Mayor Bernascony?
No questions.
All right, let me see if I've got my acronym right. PEPRA is post-employee, no, go, tell me.
Public Employee Pension Reform Act.
Okay. This might be, it depends, the answer to this might be, it depends. Do public employees get social security benefits?
It does depend.
It does depend.
Some agencies have social security, other agencies don't. Some agencies have it for their miscellaneous employees and not their public safety employees. It really depends.
Okay, and this might be a question that you can say, yeah, you're about right. So is the average public employee benefit when they retire around $35,000 a year?
I don't remember, but it is lower.
It's kind of in that range.
It is somewhere in that range.
It's not a six-figure number.
That's correct.
It's a five-figure number.
And that number is published by CALPERS pretty regularly.
Okay, because I think, you know, we often see in the media, you know, the retirement benefits associated with high-profile individuals, but we don't often see what their rank-and-file public employee gets. Okay, those are my questions. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anybody?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Hold on one second. I'm going to open it for public comment.
Yeah, I know these two do.
All right, William, would you like to make a public comment?
I have a couple of quick questions. Did you say something about fossil?
No question, wait, William.
Did you say something about fossil fuel company towards the end of his thing?
Yeah, there's a consideration.
Question number two, is there any way these technical guys can dumb it down to where an average worker can understand what he's saying?
Yeah.
I understood, I'm intelligent, I understood most, a lot of it, but not all of it, though.
Yeah, great. And we do something in our budget process called the Budget in Brief, and it has some of that plain language.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice if it was made public in an understandable way. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and inquire if there's any additional questions or comments. All right, well, this was an information-only item, although it felt like it was more than just information, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll look at our capital improvements, a preview for fiscal year 2023, '24. Good evening, Mr. Shikowski.
Good evening, Mayor Haldes Shelton and members of the council. My name is Jason Shikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. It's my great pleasure to share with you tonight the city's planned capital improvement program for fiscal year '24. This year's CIP consists of 130 projects across five departments totaling just over $139 million. Staff has selected some highlights from the CIP list that I will share with you. I will then share some summary slides showing the complete list of CIP projects, and once finished, we have experts from every city department available here to answer any questions you might have regarding those projects. First up is Roseville Electric with $25.2 million in CIP projects split into five categories: distribution system improvements, connecting new customer services, power plants, facilities, and advanced metering. Roseville's a growing community, and the electric department continues to invest in infrastructure to ensure system reliability. In fiscal year '24, $3.3 million is budgeted for distribution systems. Electric expects to install $5.4 million of developer-funded new electric system infrastructure in fiscal year '24. The infrastructure includes underground cables, vaults, panels, switches, and transformers to connect new customers. At the Roseville Energy Park and Roseville Power Plant II, the fiscal year '24 capital plan budget of $3.6 million was developed to extend equipment life, improve efficiency, and expand flexibility. Significant investments in this plan include the replacement or upgrade of major components of the Roseville Energy Park, including improvements to the zero-liquid discharge system, I included this because I thought it was a fascinating term, which separates the water, which prepares the water for the steam processes at the plant, and a replacement of the catalyst, which is necessary for emissions control. Electric is planning a $3.5 million in facilities and technology investments this year, with the largest being the build-out of floors three and four of the 116 South Grant Street building. The advanced metering infrastructure project has a $9.4 million budget planned for fiscal year '24, most of which will cover the cost of electric and water metering equipment and third-party installations. Currently, the project has deployed meters in a small pilot area in the community to offer real-world understanding of the installation, communication, and systems integration process. Citywide meter deployment for both utilities will commence upon the successful completion of the pilot, which is expected to occur this summer. Next, we have the Environmental Utilities Department with $32.1 million in CIP projects for fiscal year '24. Utility Operations Center Facility Construction Project will provide facilities and services for the city's Waste Services Division and Water Utility. These facilities will include a material recovery facility, vehicle maintenance building, and heavy-duty vehicle charging infrastructure. While there's no fiscal year '24 budget request for the project, the total project cost is estimated to be $60 million. Design and sequel efforts are slated to begin this summer, and the first phase of construction is estimated to begin in 2025. The compressed natural gas retrofit upgrade project will improve portions of the fleet services infrastructure, the garage, to be in compliance with all applicable requirements for the maintenance and repair of compressed natural gas vehicles. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $2.5 million and should be sufficient to fund the entire project. Construction is anticipated to begin in the winter of this year. The ongoing sewer collection cured-in-place pipe rehabilitation project will rehabilitate existing sewer collection system pipelines with a fiberglass cured-in-place liner. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $1.8 million with the total project cost estimated to be over $10 million. Construction for the next phase of pipelines will begin in the spring of this year. The biofilter system rehabilitation project will restore the existing primary biofilter, or odor control, system, and redesign and install a new foul air odor collection system at the Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $1.1 million with the total project cost estimated to be $6.7 million, and construction should begin next year. The aquifer storage and recovery wells project at Campus Oaks and Misty Wood will construct two potable water wells with aquifer storage and recovery facilities based on recommendations from the groundwater strategic plan. The fiscal year '24 budget request and total project cost estimate is $15 million. Well-drilling construction is scheduled to begin in May of this year, this month, and topside improvements will start construction in 2024. The next two projects are ongoing from previous years. The advanced metering infrastructure project, this is funding for EU's portion of the advanced metering infrastructure installation mentioned earlier with the Roseville Electric project section. EU's fiscal year '24 budget request is $3.8 million, and the estimated total cost is almost $16 million. The smudged water recharge project provides annual funds to implement water transfers from the Sacramento Municipal Utility District for up to 6,000 acre feet a year, and the fiscal year '24 budget request is $250,000, and the estimated total cost is $1.5 million. The final two EU projects are for the Barton Road Water Treatment Plant. The water treatment plant motor control center replacement project will replace the existing electrical equipment and filter gallery motor control centers at the plant. During a recent condition assessment, this equipment was identified as being at the end of its useful life, obsolete due to unavailable spares, no longer supported, and a safety concern due to their age. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $1 million, and the estimated total cost is $2 million. Construction is anticipated to begin in the winter of 2024. The water treatment plant 2-million-gallon tank rehabilitation project will replace the existing tank as recommended by the condition assessment study. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $2 million. year '24 budget request is $2 million, and the estimated total cost is $5.5 million. Construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year '26. Next up is the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department with $21 million in projects for fiscal year '24. $16.2 million of those dollars are for new construction, including the Roseville Soccer Complex, and $4.7 million are for park rehabilitations, including youth development and golf. Planning for the regional sports complex located on Westbrook Drive in West Roseville is ongoing. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $12.25 million. This slide is the current working concept plan that shows 10 artificial turf fields, a universally accessible playground, and support features such as sports, lighting, parking, restrooms, plazas, concessions, a looped walking trail, and a satellite corporation yard. The design assist contract and contract award, contractor and contract award, was approved by council at the March 15, 2023 meeting, and the total estimated cost of the project is $61 million. Construction should begin later this summer. New park projects for this year include the start of design for a number of neighborhood parks. There's C-63 in Creekview, CO-61 in Campus Oaks, and DF-50 and FD-50, both in Sierra Vista. Funding is also being requested to study the fitament homestead out at Pistachio Regional Park. The plan is to hire a consultant to help develop a realistic vision for the use of this historical home and its immediate surroundings. For fiscal year '24, additional funding is being requested for continued development of the following parks: denial family parks, $40,000; Midu Skate Track, $105,000; KT-52 School Park, $3.4 million; Weber Park, $2 million; and Johnson Pool, $400,000. The fiscal year '24 rehab budget also includes $535,000 in place structure replacements split evenly between Twinwood Park, Hall Park, and Veterans Park South. Up next is the Information Technology Department with just over $2.2 million in project, projects funding requests. The law enforcement records management system upgrade project will replace the police department's existing end-of-life records management system with a current state-of-the-art platform. The estimated project cost and fiscal year '24 budget request is $100,000. This project is scheduled to begin this July and be completed by the summer of 2027. The police department mutual aid repeaters are simple pieces of infrastructure that enable agencies from different jurisdictions across local and state and federal agencies to communicate with each other. PD employs two mutual aid repeaters for this purpose, which are out of support and need to be replaced with current models. The fiscal year '24 budget request and total project cost is $125,000, and the project should begin this summer and be completed in 2025. The Agenda Automation Software Project will replace the end-of-life Novus and Board View software currently being used by the city. This project is scheduled to begin in July of 2023 and be finished by June of 2025. The Public Records Request Implementation Project will fund the research, purchase, and implementation of software system that provides tracking, notifications, workflow, and document storage for public record requests across the entire city. The fiscal year '24 budget request and estimated project cost is $20,000. This project is scheduled to begin this summer and be completed by June of 2025. And the final group of projects requesting funding for fiscal year '24 belongs to Public Works with $58.8 million in project funding requests. This includes $56.3 million in capital and non-capital projects and $2.5 million in rehabilitation projects. Phase one of the two-mile-long Dry Creek-Greenway East multi-use trail project running from Darling Way and Riverside to Rocky Ridge and Midu should begin construction in 2023, later this year. The estimated total project cost is $19.8 million, with funding coming from local transportation funds and state and federal grants. Phase two of the Dry Creek-Greenway Trail will construct approximately 1.5 miles of Class 1 bikeways that will facilitate regional trail connections to the American River Parkway, Sacramento Northern, and Miners Ravine Trails, with the ultimate goal of being part of a 70-mile-long loop system of interconnected paved trails in the Sacramento-Placer region. Roseville recently received a $6 million grant to construct Phase Two of the project, so design on Phase Two will begin later this year. The Rapid Link, or Placer Express, bus service will provide a bus every 30 minutes in both directions between Lincoln, the mall, Sutter Hospital, Kaiser Hospital, and the Light Rail Station at Watt and I-80. Funding for this service is broken into two separate projects, capital and operating. The capital project funds the procurement of five new 40-foot battery electric buses, three depot chargers, and two en route chargers, and is funded with $2 million in state funds. The operating project will fund contract drivers, currently MV Transit, electricity repairs, and other operating costs. The bus service is planned to operate for a minimum of three years as a pilot project, with pilot project operating funds totaling $5.1 million, coming from a mixture of federal, state, and regional sources. Rosel Transit recently launched a new microtransit service for Roseville residents. The new service is called Rosel Transit Arrow, or Arrow for short. We will be bringing a presentation to you guys on the Arrow at the next council meeting. Microtransit is a widely-used term in the transit industry that describes an on-demand shuttle service using smaller transit vehicles, such as Rosel Transit's dial-or-ride vehicles, or some new vans that we're looking at purchasing. Passengers request on their smartphone, computer, or telephone rides. They can be same-day rides. The rides are then scheduled using the software provided by a microtransit company, similar to a well-known Uber and Lyft services. The passenger is notified of the pickup time, and the vehicle's location went en route to your location. The $700,000 in fiscal year '24 funding is for four electric vans that were secured through federal funds. Rosel Transit recently also received federal funding to purchase eight electric dial-or-ride bus replacements for existing vehicles in the fleet that have met or exceeded their useful life. Procurement activities are currently underway. Delivery of the vehicles are expected in 2024. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $2.8 million, primarily funded with federal sources and some matching Transportation Development Act money. The Dry Creek-Greenway West Trail Project will design and construct a three-mile-long multi-use trail in the city of Roseville and unincorporated Placer County along Dry Creek from Riverside Avenue to Cook-Riola Road. The $1.3 million fiscal year '24 budget request is to begin the design and environmental portion of the project using Transportation Development Act funds. Staff anticipates funding the $13 million construction portion of the project with grants, reimbursement agreements with Placer County, and additional Transportation Development Act funds as needed. The city of Roseville broke ground on a $4.9 million zero-emission bus and zero-emission fleet charging depot in August of last year. The project includes construction of a new 30-space bus and 70-space fleet parking and charging area. The charging depot is expected to be completed in the fall of this year. We're waiting on some charging equipment that we're having supply chain issues with, but we paved it out just recently. The Mahaney Park Trail Project will design, complete, the environmental analysis, and construct a paved multi-use trail through the Mahaney Park open space per the Bicycle Master Plan and 2020 Mahaney Park Trail and Open Space Feasibility Study. The total project is $3.8 million with the fiscal year '24 budget request of $225,000 to begin the design and environmental work. Construction could begin as early as 2026. The Reason Farms Retention Basin Project will design and construct a roughly 3,800-acre-foot flood retention basin in the Al Johnson Wildlife Area to provide precipitation mitigation for development projects in the Dry Creek and Curry Creek watersheds on the northwest side of the city. The $3.5 million fiscal year '24 request is to complete, budget request is to complete the design and environmental work for the project beginning this coming fall or winter. The project will be constructed as soon as sufficient developer fees or grant funds have been collected to cover the estimated $27 million construction cost. The earliest we would expect to have completed plans and environmental approval would be fiscal year '26. The Los Cerritos-Rosel Heights Residential Resurfacing Project will provide much-needed roadway maintenance for streets, storm drains, curbs, and gutters within the Los Cerritos-Rosel Heights neighborhoods. The fiscal year '24 budget request is $100,000, and will start the storm drain design so that it's ready to be completed in conjunction with Environmental Utilities Waterline Replacement Project planned for those neighborhoods in the near future. The actual resurfacing work is currently planned for fiscal year '27 and will occur after all underground work has been completed. The estimated total cost is $3 million. The traffic signal and roadway improvements for the citywide sports complex project provides funding for four new traffic signals and associated intersection widening on Blokes Boulevard and West Park Drive. The total project cost and fiscal year '24 budget request is $5.2 million. Funding is from the general funders Capital Reserve Fund, and will be paid back by traffic mitigation fees, developer-paid traffic mitigation fees over time. Construction will begin later this year or early next year. The Roseville Parkway Extension Project will extend a four-lane section of Roseville Parkway over the railroad tracks between Washington and Foothills and expected to be under construction by the end of this year, depending upon the final acquisition of the last piece of right-of-way that we need for the project. Because the project has not yet been bid, the total cost and construction contract award date is not yet known, so no fiscal year '24 allocation is shown on the project, and the project will be funded with a budget adjustment along with award of the project later this year, hopefully. The total project cost is estimated to be $26 million. The Pleasant Grove Widening Project, which will widen Pleasant Grove between Foothills and Wood Creek Oaks to three lanes in each direction, is expected to go to construction before the end of fiscal year '23. A $9.7 million budget adjustment for construction funding will go to council for approval, along with the construction contract award, hopefully prior to the fiscal year '24 starting date of July 1st, so no budget requests included with the fiscal year '24 budget. We will request that money separately with award of project. The new fire station number eight is under construction. They are moving dirt at the corner of Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard and Painted Desert Drive and should be completed by the summer of 2024. The Vernon Atlantic Multimodal Safety Improvement Project will construct a raised median to lower speeds and reduce turning movement conflicts, and install a high-visibility crosswalk with rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the far end of Vernon Street near Jefferson Street. The $1.5 million project should be under construction in fiscal year '25. The Roseville Parkway Widening Project has been broken into two phases, with Phase One including the new triple-left turn lane from westbound Pleasant Grove to eastbound Rosel Parkway, heading towards the mall, and turn lane extensions at the intersection of Rosel Parkway and Galleria. Phase One will also complete the design and environmental approvals for Phase Two so that we have a shelf-ready project. The Phase One total cost, including design, environmental, and construction, is $7.9 million, with a fiscal year '24 budget request of $3.6 million to start construction, and a fiscal year '25 budget request expected for $2 million to finish construction. Phase Two is another $12 million cost, and will add two lanes to Roseville Parkway between Creekside Ridge Drive and Gibson Drive, making that road a four-lane arterial. The construction timing for this project, Phase Two, depends on available traffic mitigation fees and grant funding. The fiscal year '24, $4.65 million budget request for the Sun City roadway resurfacing project will finish off the five-year Sun City resurfacing plan with the final Sun City neighborhoods being resurfaced in the summer of 2024. Once completed, all of Sun City will have been resurfaced over the past five years at a total cost of $17 million, paid for with state gas tax funding. $8.3 million is being requested with the fiscal year '24 budget to purchase seven new zero-emission battery electric commuter buses to replace existing buses in the fleet that have met or exceeded their useful life. Procurement activities began in fiscal year '21, with award anticipated to occur this year, and buses being delivered in fiscal year '25. This was primarily a grant-funded project, federal grant. The fiscal year '24, $350,000 budget request for Rosel Transit Comprehensive Operational Analysis will fund a study to complete a top-to-bottom review of Rosel Transit's system, including local routes, commuter routes, and microtransit services. What types, what sizes, and how many buses to include in our fleet, analyze the effectiveness of our current and proposed system, and provide suggestions for potential improvements. The study will begin this fall with a report of findings by the end of 2024. We also received a federal grant for that work. And the final fiscal year '24 CIP that I want to highlight for you is a $100,000 budget request for the Signal Preemption for Transit Services Project, which will fund transit priority preemption for Rosel Transit at signal installations along various congested corridors within Roseville. So to finish off my presentation tonight, I'm going to read through the list of CIP projects that are receiving funding this year and this year's CIP program. I'll skip projects that I already mentioned. Those projects will be highlighted in yellow on these pages, so I'm not going to say them twice. This should provide you with enough time to read the slides yourself and make notes regarding any projects for which you might have questions once I finish the list. Again, we have experts here from every department who can answer any questions you have. So first up are two slides from Roseville Electric, and we have the Creekview Substation Facilities Improvements, Sierra Vista Transformer Number Two Edition, Remote Terminal Unit Replacement, and Utility Billing CIS Redundancy. We have a 60-kilovolt power line restringing, Roseville Power Plant 2 rehabilitation, streetlight relocation, Roseville Energy Park rehabilitation, electric substation security upgrades, 60-kilovolt bus protection upgrade, customer self-service web portal and mobile app, and the Traffic Operations Center Rehabilitation Project. Next are two slides of EU projects. We have the Waste Services Shop and Office Building Rehabilitation, wastewater industrial pretreatment program update, Collection Sewer Pump Station Programmable Logic Controllers Rehabilitation, Environmental Utilities Resiliency and Cybersecurity Evaluation and Plan Development, Downtown Water Capacity Modeling and Analysis, Church Street Wet Weather Upgrades, West Zone Recycled Water Tank Rehabilitation, Backflow Program Technology Project, Downtown Water Maines Rehabilitation Phase Two, Hydrant Program Technology Project, Regional Wastewater Lift Station Number One Decommissioning, Diamond Oaks Fire Hydrant Relocation Project, Compressed Natural Gas Fueling Station Upgrades, Regional 30-Inch Interceptor Rehabilitation, Stone Ridge Tank Site Improvements, Cooperative Potable Water Transmission Infrastructure, and Water Security and Resiliency Improvements. For Parks and Recs and Library, there are three pages of slides, or three slides of projects. There's Adventure Club Repairs, Barn Demolition and Removal, Basketball Court Replacement, System-Wide Concrete Repairs, Downtown Library Public Service Desk Security Upgrades, Midu Community Center Digital Reader Board Street Sign, Mike Shalito Indoor Pool Lap Pool Heater, Roseville Aquatics Complex Picnic Tables and Shade Structure, Roseville Aquatic Complex Pools Equipment Replacement, Roseville Aquatic Complex Locker Rooms and Showers, Wood Creek Golf Club Bunker Renovation, and the Apollo Dog Park NC-57, which I think that's just, it's a small amount because I think it's some signage. For Information Technology, there's one slide, there's some security equipment and software, email security gateway, so email security stuff, citywide and public safety data storage, data center networking, enterprise training software, security equipment and software, enterprise vulnerability management, infrastructure network and server equipment, and some police department server replacements. And to finish off, again, with Public Works, there are five slides. There's a Templeton Court roadway repair, storm drain outfall repairs, regulatory floodplain completion and documentation project, facility improvements, Americans with Disability Act-type improvements, aquatics complex classroom rehabilitation, civic center HVAC boxcar replacement, corporation yard administration intrusion alarm replacement, corporation yard administrative network cabling, fire station rehabilitation, fleet facility rehabilitation, fleet parts room rehabilitation, intermediate distribution frame closet HVAC replacement, Mahaney Fitness Center Wayfinding Update, Midu Library HVAC replacements, Martha R. Library Utility Expo Center Lighting Control and Gutter Replacement, parking lot rehabilitation at park facilities, Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant Flooring, Roseville Police Department Landscape and Irrigation Rehabilitation, Wood Creek Golf Course HVAC and fire alarm replacement, alignment racks at the corporation yard garage, outlets at the Roseville Aquatics Complex, that's power outlets, card key access upgrades at the downtown library, new HVAC unit in the corp yard warehouse, fire station number three dorm restroom improvements, new card key access system at the fire training center, security cameras at the fire training center, multi-hazard plan update, multi-use trail wayfinding signs, active transportation plans update, storm drain repair project, 2024 bike trail resurfacing, bike ped bridge repainting, Pleasant Grove Creek Trail gap closure at Veterans Park, and the last one is the Stone Ridge Parcel 58 Bike Trail Miners Ravine to Orvieto Drive. That was a lot, and I want to point out that originally, earlier today, I had slides for each one of those projects, and I was told that was too many slides. So I tried to condense it, it still was a mouthful. So thank you for bearing with me. That concludes the presentation, and myself and other experts, as I said, from the other CIP departments are available to answer any questions should you have them.
Great. Councilman Albert, any questions?
Yes. I'm going to start with a quick comment. It really would have been nice to have this list ahead of time. It was not in our packet. It was not in our packet, and it would have been nice because that was hard to follow and try to make quick notes on, so if we do this again, it'd be great, so we can ask some questions ahead of time. Okay, here's some of my questions. The repeaters that we're talking about getting new equipment for, these aren't new towers or locations, it's just the equipment on top of existing towers, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not on top, it's down, it's down below, it's just stuff that's wearing out.
We're not looking for new locations?
Not new locations, no new towers.
I just remember that last time.
Sorry, I should have let IT answer that, but.
And then I wanted clarification, I know you went through it kind of quick, but the traffic signals, Blue Oaks and Westbrook you mentioned, but my understanding, we're also talking about traffic signals at Blue Oaks and Hayden, is that correct, or is that, was that left off?
That is correct, I'm sorry. In my hurry, I kind of shortened the answer, but there are two on Blue Oaks, it's Hayden and Westbrook, and there's actually two on Westbrook that are at the new sports complex.
Great, okay, I just was really worried because that Hayden one is a horrible problem right now. And then Lemonade Park, what's the finish date estimated on that or the start date? Do we know on that one?
I don't remember choosing that lemon.
We're Jill Guck, she's over here.
Walking up, my other question is the, the web and mobile app for Wesnow. I just remember seeing $650,000 for a website and mobile app, and it was concerning.
Was it electric?
I just would be curious why a website and mobile app would cost $650,000, so just a little bit more information on that one, but. Now Lemonade Park is going to be loved by that community, I was just curious.
The Creekview Park that you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Albert. Good evening, everyone, I'm Jill Geller, your Parks Recreation and Libraries Director. We will be starting public outreach for that park later this year, and it's typically a two-year process to construct a park, so we would probably look at opening in 2025.
Thank you, Jill. I just wanted to say that because I know some of them are watching, so.
Yeah, and that, that $650 you're talking about was this Customer Self-Service Web Portal and Mobile App, and that is Roseville Electric, or IT.
The Chief Information Officer on behalf of Electric and Utility Groups, that is the utility payments interface applications on the mobile device.
Does that seem like really expensive, $650,000?
Yes, especially it's tracking all the AMI meters, updates, and billings.
So it includes that software in the background?
Yes.
Okay. I was just concerned that we're hiring really expensive companies for mobile apps, so, okay.
If I could jump in here, earlier on our consent, we had an item in which we're selling unused IP addresses, right?
Yes.
And getting about 2.3 million, or?
Approximately 1.6 to 2.6 million dollars.
Right, so I want to balance out Councilman Albert's comments with, you know, the plus side of the, so, thank you.
Here, it's, it's background data stuff and not just the app itself, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
I had, I had a couple of questions. You know, it'd be kind of nice to have that list, maybe to give all the council members that.
Absolutely.
Just a question, you talked about the Arrow rides, bus rides, and the Dial-A-Ride. What's going to be in there, the Dial-A-Ride is being replaced buses? They almost sound like they're doing the same thing. I mean, you know, one's going to be faster, so is that, why, are we getting both because this one, the ones are getting to be obsolete and we have a chance to get them and we don't have that many Arrows?
So we applied for the federal money before we got to the point where we knew we were going to go with microtransit, and so there, we call them Dial-A-Ride buses because that's what, that's what people associate with Dial-A-Ride is the style of bus. However, we are actually no longer marketing Dial-A-Ride in the city of Roseville, we're only doing Arrow. Arrow will serve the purpose of Dial-A-Ride. So while you can, Dial-A-Ride was day before reservations and it costs extra to reserve that day and you had to call.
That's what I understand, yeah.
Yeah, now we have the app, you can get on the web, or you can call, and you can do it the same day for the same price. And so all the Dial-A-Ride buses are being rebranded as Arrow buses, they're getting some new wraps on them that say Arrow, so everything will be Arrow, and we are trying to convince the federal government to allow us to buy vans instead of the cutaway buses because our, our cutaway buses are generally not full all the way, and so we can go with a little smaller, steeper, easier to maneuver vehicle to really try to rebrand microtransit.
I think that's an excellent idea because I, I feel the same way. If we have buses that are going around empty, that's, it's not a good thing. And seeing something small and get it, and you can call up and get something as easy as Uber, and for people that may not be able to drive anymore or don't want to drive, they, they can do this, and I think this is, I think it's good.
Let me jump in there, what's the price of Arrow? $2.50 if you're a senior?
It's, yeah, and $3.50 if, if you're not.
It's cheaper than Uber.
Oh, yeah, I remembered that.
Okay.
That was good.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's fine, Chris. And my other question is, when will the meters go in effect? You said the electric and the EU meters will be going, I mean, will you be doing an area at one time, will we have them in in a year, do the new houses already have them, you know, those kind of questions.
We got somebody coming up.
Eric Campbell.
Got a question for you.
Sure, Eric Campbell, Roseville Electric. So we're in the beta phase right now, it'll go through the end of June of this year, and then we'll kick off full deployment, which will last about 12 to 14 months. And so it'll be neighborhood by neighborhood, very sequential, lots of outreach, folks know well ahead of time when their meter's going to be swapped out.
Okay, will they, will they, how will they notice except see that the meter looks different?
Well, they're going to get a postcard about two weeks in advance, and they're also going to get a door hanger before and after the installation.
Okay.
Now, for residential customers, there will be a slight outage, maybe three to five minutes, but it will be brief, it's unavoidable. Commercial customers will see no, no outage.
And, and the new homes right now, they don't have them?
Not yet, no.
Okay, thank you, that was my, that was my question.
Sure, thank you.
And then my other question was on the retention basin, will, I guess we'll get more information on it, what it's going to look like, you know, how, you know, because there were a lot of plans in the future, kind of what it would be, so I'm interested to see what it really turns out to be.
Yeah, and I think we'll, we'll get a lot more detail, well, first of all, we're sharing some information on the website, so you can go there, the public can go there and take a look at the website and see some of the preliminary layouts, but you know, until we get really into the design, you know, we won't know all the details. I, I think it'll be pretty close. It's, it's basically a big hole that we put in the ground, you know, and store water in, so it's not super complicated, but it does cost money.
Now, I remember when we needed to do that as a mitigation many years ago, and so I just, I mean, there were a lot of plans of what it could be and how it would be functioning. It's similar, reminds me of Marco Dog Park, you know, it's a dog park, but it's a detention basin.
Yes, in fact, we plan on working with Parks and Rec during the design process to figure out how we can use that space as a park. So what, what uses would be compatible with storage of rainwater? And so actually Jill and I have been talking about it, Jill with the Parks Director, and, and so we're actually, when we go out for an RFP, we're going to look at either having a sub consultant, working with our consultant directly, or making sure that in the contract it says you have to work with Parks Consultant to figure out how we're going to use that space.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Just one question, and for, for Jill, probably. Lemonade Park, I don't remember that coming before us, can you refresh my memory on, on how that got its name? Or maybe I'm just not tracking it, but I just don't recall that.
The name is not Lemonade Park, I think that was Scott's reference to it, right now.
It was on the list that way.
No, they give it on the list.
It does not, that's the street, it's a, it's a, just CO 63 right now, it has not come before you for park naming yet.
It was on the list, I was just wondering if it had gotten named that.
I don't remember seeing it, that's.
Good catch, Councilmember Mandanza, real quick question for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Los Aridos, Roseville Heights, does that include any sidewalk improvements in that work?
We will be repairing sidewalk and putting in pedestrian access ramps, it currently does not include the addition of any sidewalk. Of course, that's something we could look at if that's what the council desires.
Yep, thank you very much, okay, we're going to open up for public comment if there are no other questions from, open up for public comment. William, I see your hand, you want to go to the podium, William?
Do I have to make a comment, or can I ask the question of the gentleman?
No, the questions are directed here.
Okay.
And.
Did he say something about fixing the bunkers at the, at the golf course?
Yes, that was, that was on his list at Wood Creek Oaks.
Oh, Wood Creek, okay. Also, he said something about Rush Park, not Rush Park, Weber, Weber Park. Now, again, I heard through the grapevine, some guy, homeless dude told me that the cop, or somebody's going to, going to like wipe out Weber Park, is that true?
Conversations with the neighborhood on what the redesign of Weber Park should be.
A redesign, they're not going to just totally destroy it, right?
Right.
Okay, also, one more thing, he didn't mention Royer Park. Royer, I've, I've lived in Roseville for 58 years, Royer Park has a special place in my heart, it'd be nice if they could pump some, you know, a couple, you guys talk about millions of dollars like it's nothing, so maybe a couple more, I like the way they did the basketball court, but a couple more million dollars towards Royer Park would be very nice for, yeah, thank, thank you.
Your comments, all right, any other public comments? Please come to the, to the podium.
So I have a question on the transportation. I hear there's a $500,000 expenditure on a study of microtransit versus this transit and that transit, but I'm also hearing about investments being made ahead of the study. Did I mishear that, and what's the rationale of doing the investment before the study?
There's a lot of aspects to transit, is there anything in specific you're?
No, I'm just seeing that there is a study being done, but then there's also investments being proposed ahead of the study, so as a local citizen, I'm, I just have a question. What's the rationale of doing a study, but doing an invest, other investments or capital spending on transportation before the study?
Can you answer, can you provide some insight on that?
Yeah, I could see how that could be a little confusing. A lot of it has to do with the fact we have buses that need to be replaced now, and the study is going to be looking out to the future. So the buses we have, we're having this issue right now with our microtransit, is our Dial-A-Ride buses are so old, they're breaking down continuously, we seldom have enough buses to even run the service effectively, so the buses need to be replaced when they need to be replaced. And the study, you know, like I said, will be a future, looking at the future, so, I lost my train of thought, sorry, just a sec. So the, oh, what I wanted to mention was, so the funding came available from the federal government for the buses. It's not, it's not city of Roseville money, it's not local money, the federal government said, hey, we want you to electrify buses, here's a bunch of money. So we applied for that money years ago, before we really decided to redesign our transit system, and we finally got awarded the money, the money's here, the buses need to be replaced because they're breaking down, so we're moving forward with that, and we will make adjustments to use those resources however we decide to redesign our transit system. Going forward, we're looking for recommendations on future buses, what might we need for size wise, do we need smaller buses, bigger buses, you know, taller buses, you know, whatever it is. But we have to keep moving forward because we need the buses now, it's just the way the money happened to fall.
All right, thanks very much. Any other, any other public comments? All right, seeing no other public comments, I'll ask the council if they have any other questions or comments. Seeing none, this was an information only item and no actions required. I will say that we will see all of this, where's my schedule, May 19th, when the budget, when the entire budget is released, this will be a significant portion, so what we saw tonight was a preview, right? And, and we will.
Mayor, I was going to mention that, before, before budget, this is, this is a cursor, that's why there's no action tonight, this is a preliminary look at the, the capital improvement projects, there'll be a full presentation given to you, a full list of projects prior to taking action on these items. They'll give you time to answer questions, so, but agreed, could have given you one in advance as well, so my apologies.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Shikowski, that's no actions required. It's a council pleasure for a two-minute break. Okay, we're going to power through, all right. We've got some public hearings we need to get through, I think we're at, I think we've, we've come back out of halftime now, and now we got the second half, so first public hearing is the Community Development Block Grant, Block Grant 2023 Action Plan. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we'll take the presentation from Housing Manager, Tricia Isom, and Economic Development Director, Melissa Anguiano.
Good evening, Mayor Hada Schultz, and City Council Members. As you said, I'm Tricia Isom, Housing Manager and Economic Development. Tonight I'll be presenting on the Community Development Block Grant 2023/2024 Annual Action Plan. This is, this item is routine in nature. The city of Roseville is a Community Development Block Grant entitlement jurisdiction. We receive annual allocations of CDBG funds from HUD to promote affordable housing and community development programs for low-income residents. City of Roseville's 23 CDBG allocation is $691,234, and in addition, we feel that we'll have about $50,000 in program income available to be allocated as well. The CDBG award is broken down into different funding categories, we have a maximum of 20% that can be allocated toward planning and administration, this pays for annual program management and administration of individual CDBG grants. A maximum of 15% of program funds can be allocated for public services, which can go toward programs such as mental health services, food, and services for the unsheltered. The remainder of the funds must go toward public facilities projects, which could include improvements to infrastructure, activities related to housing, and neighborhood improvements. In order to determine which applications were funded for 2023, staff convened a review panel of housing and CDBG staff from the city of Roseville, as well as a consultant from Thurman Consulting. Requests for funding under the public services category totaled $90,000. The majority of the proposed programs were for ongoing programs under the city's current and past funding cycles, and one of the public service programs requesting funding was deemed ineligible at this time due, due to the funding structure of the actual organization. We also received two applications for public facilities. Unfortunately, neither of the project proposals fit within the CDBG guidance for capital improvement projects. Because of Salvation Army's public facilities application, it fit within the guidelines of public services, so it was recommended that we approve funding of $15,000 under the public services category for that application. We will be adding clarification to next year's CDBG public meeting that we held, that we hold annually, we're going to provide more examples of past public facilities projects so we don't have similar issues in the future. So the panel did recommend approving the six activities on, on this slide. Addressing the need for more affordable housing continues to be a high priority need in the city's five-year CDBG plan, therefore, $412,987 is proposed to be allocated toward support of affordable rental and transitional housing development. Transitional housing was added to the draft plan when a nonprofit operator requested that funding be made for this specific purpose. We ran a similar program last year, it was extremely successful, so we're hoping we'll be able to continue this. Once the proposed action plan is approved by HUD, the city will release a notification of funding availability to use these funds for acquisition of a site designated for affordable housing. Remaining award funds are proposed for allocation to the city of Roseville Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program. This assists low-income homeowners with energy-efficient and health and safety-related repairs, which increase both the quality of life for our residents and the quality of housing stock in the city of Roseville. This program is also funded with federal home funds, however, there are a few items that are not eligible but are allowable with CDBG funds, such as, such as emergency repairs and, and grants. So with this, staff recommends that the city council receive public comment on the 23 Annual Action Plan and adopt a resolution to adopt it for submission to HUD. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, Councilman Albert, do you have any questions on the presentation?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Bernascony?
I don't have any questions, thank you, Tricia.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
No, that was fine, thank you.
Councilwoman Mandanza?
No questions, thank you, Tricia.
Did I read in here that there's a program with landlords to incentivize, is that in this?
That's with the Roseville Housing Authority, that's a new program with Roseville Housing.
Okay.
The item's on the consent calendar.
Just to let you know, I'm reading the consent calendar, too. Just to let you know, I'm reading the consent calendar, too. All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? All right, I'll close public comment, and I'll close the public comment, public hearing. I'll inquire if the council has any additional questions, and if they don't, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion. Please read the motion.
Thank you, sir. On item 10.1, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-143, approving the 2023 Annual Action Plan and authorizing the City Manager to execute necessary documents and certifications on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I could get a motion to approve, please.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Hadda Shelt.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your presentation. All right, next up is, if I haven't lost my place, 10.2, zoning ordinance on sign ordinance update. I will open the public hearing. Good evening, Mr. Bitter and Senior Planner Lauren Hawker.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hadda Shelt, members of the City Council. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with your Development Services Department. I'm here with Lauren Hawker tonight to do one of our annual updates to the zoning ordinance. This is a regular cleanup item and also taking care of some state laws that have changed that we need to address in the zoning ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Good evening, Council. As you indicated, my name is Lauren Hawker, and I'm here to present to you the zoning inside ordinance update for this year. As Greg indicated, these are pretty minor changes this year, so I'll try and run through this real quick, really quickly. So next slide, please. All right, so the first thing we're doing is we are proposing to correct some errors in the definition of long-term care. Oh, and I should say that the details of all of these changes are in your staff report, and you have the red lines, which is one reason why I'm gonna sort of run through this. We're also adding electric vehicle charging stations as a use on our permitted use table, because it's sort of an emerging use, like gas stations. Related to that, we're renaming gas station to fuel station in order to recognize alternative fuels are now becoming more common. The other thing we're doing is we're adding a note to that commercial use table to indicate that residential uses that are permitted on a commercial property may also require a unit transfer or a specific plan amendment. This isn't a new requirement, that's a requirement of our specific plans. We just want to make sure it's in the zoning ordinance as well, so you don't need both documents to know about that requirement. Assembly Bill 2244 added a requirement for a religious use parking reduction, and that is to allow a 50% reduction in required religious use parking spaces in conjunction with a housing project on a religious use property. All right, every year we have changes to the density bonus ordinance and the accessory dwelling unit section in response to legislation. This is no different. We have Assembly Bill 682 and 2221. These are relatively minor changes this year. Most of these changes are just clarifications that are actually already consistent with city practice. The bigger items that aren't actually that significant are that density bonus now, shared housing is a type of housing that's eligible for a density bonus. And for accessory dwelling units, there's something called the mandatory minimum ADU, where you have to allow, flex your standards to allow at least this minimum size of ADU. One of the standards that's added to the standards we may need to flex was the front yard setback. However, we get to choose which standards we flex to make the ADU work. So it's unlikely we'll be, find ourselves in a situation where we have to allow an ADU in a front yard setback. Plus, we have not yet run into this situation where an ADU just can't fit unless we flex a standard. The next item we have for you is recommending that the planning manager is the approving authority for a standalone design review permit for a residential subdivision. Now, a DERS, as we call them, has typically gone with a subdivision map, so they go together to planning commission. But these days, it's much more common for the home builder to be different than the land developer. And so then the home, you end up hearing the project twice at planning commission. Once as a map in a DERS, and then again as a standalone DERS. So we're recommending that that standalone DERS would go, have the approving authority be the planning manager, rather than having to go back to planning commission again. And then lastly, we're just clarifying the process description for the major project permit amendments. I've got this table up here showing how the existing process is described versus the proposed. The existing process is a little confusing. It's minor modification, non-minor modification, and then all other modifications. We're proposing to have the language be much more similar to the design review process, which is a permit is not required, a letter of approval, minor modification, which is administrative, and a modification, which is a public hearing required. So that brings us to the sign ordinance changes, which are also, again, pretty minor and technical. First is to correct an error in the appeal section where it designates the Design Committee as the Appeal Authority, and then a later sentence says that City Council shall hold a hearing. So we are proposing to change City Council to Design Committee, consistent with the Appeal Authority in that section. And then the second change we're proposing is to the definition of a building facade, and this is only for the purposes of defining the sign length that is allowed. Right now, sign length is based on the length of the building facade, but a tenant may not occupy the entire building. And so it doesn't make sense for the sign length to be based on a portion of the building they don't occupy. So we're adding a clarification indicating that for the purposes of sign length, a building facade is an area occupied by the tenant on a single uninterrupted wall plane. In terms of public outreach, we've published a GIM on all the legislation passed in 2022 back in January. In February, I went and spoke at the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations Board Meeting to talk about some of these changes. In March, we held the Planning Commission hearing, and in April, the notice for this hearing was published. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission recommends that City Council adopt the two findings of fact and approve the zoning ordinance amendments. Now, for the sign ordinance, Planning Commission doesn't have review authority, so we ask for them to review and comment rather than to make a recommendation. They had no comments on the sign ordinance amendments, so the Planning Division is recommending City Council adopt the sign ordinance amendments. That concludes my rapid-fire presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have at this time.
Great, thanks very much. Councilwoman Rakucci, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza, any questions?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Albert, any questions?
No.
And Vice Mayor Bernuscony?
No questions.
I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll close the public hearing. And if the council doesn't have any additional questions regarding the presentation, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Mr. Mayor, on item 10.2, the City Council will consider adopting the two findings of fact and introduce for first reading the ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending zoning ordinance Chapter 19.08, 19.12, 19.26, 19.28, 19.60, 19.74, 19.82, of Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Commercial Zones, Parking Space Requirements, Density Bonus Regulations, Accessory Dwelling Units, Permit Requirements, and Major Project Permit Processing. And also introduce for first reading the ordinance of the Council of the City of Roseville, amending sign ordinance Chapter 17.04 and 17.08 of Title 17 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Appeals and Definitions. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Hadda Shelt.
Yes, thanks very much. Thanks for your presentation. Next up, we'll have the 2023 weed abatement public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and welcome Assistant Fire Chief Jason Rizzi to...
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jason Rizzi, your Assistant Fire Chief. I'm here with Eric Dexter with the Park, Recreation, and Libraries Department. We're gonna do a brief presentation on our activities for what has been a very wet year. So with that, Eric, would you like to cover some of the things that the Parks Department will be doing?
Sure. Just to let you know, I'm Park, Recreation, and Library Superintendent, and I oversee our open space urban forestry and district areas. So we are taking care of this in a few ways over this next season. We do it with a combination of our contractors and internal staff, and we work through that with mowing and string line trimming. And we put in fire breaks through structures, at least a 30-foot section, to protect those areas. We're also doing it through our goat grazing program, which helps with fire breaks, as well as thatch management for our open space areas. Currently, we have one herd in the city. Over the next month or so, we're gonna have six herds, which is the largest amount we've had in the city, and it's roughly 4,000 goats. So we'll have a large amount of goats running around out there. Our goal is to get all these fire breaks installed by July 1st this year. And let's see what else. We're also gonna continue to do vegetation management through after July. So we'll get the fire, focus on the fire breaks first. Our internal staff, May 15th, they're gonna start doing all that. Goats are already gonna be around doing that. And then our vegetation removal will actually go all the way through October. So it doesn't stop with just the fire breaks. That's our main focus to start with, but we continue that vegetation through October. And if you want to follow the goats, you can go on the goat tracker on the city website and check that out, and it's already up and live. There's already, like I said, it shows that one herd that's already in town, but more will be coming soon. And with that...
Good. And just to mention, we are getting a lot of phone calls and concerns from residents. Just know that this is a process. We have to wait for the rain events to stop, for growth to stop. So we are on it. We understand there's a lot of concern with all the rain we've had this winter, but it is a process gonna be ongoing for the next couple months, and something we're actively engaged in. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Right. Councilman Albert, any questions?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Bernuscony?
Quick question. Property owners, private property owners are billed for weed abatement. What happens if, did it ever happen that they want to do it themselves, or what happens?
Vice Mayor, actually, if they can complete the weed abatement themselves as the private property owner, and that's what we would request, what happens is if they don't complete the weed abatement by the timeline of July 1st, then the city will take action, cut the weeds in, you know, for public safety, and then those properties will come back before council, and there'll be a resolution to put that on the private property tax rolls. That's where the city would recoup those costs. But we're actually very fortunate. You know, I think people take it very seriously. We've had very minimal opportunities to do that, so we've been effective in the last few years not having to go that route.
And in the open space, how far or how close do you get to property, you know, private property owner's space?
So our standard is 30 feet from anything combustible, be it a fence or a structure of that nature. Depending on the size of the parcel, if it's an acre or less, it has to be completely mitigated. If it's larger than that, there'll be a fire break around it, and not the whole, the whole lot will not have to be cut, because a lot of these areas are riparian areas, they're habitat. We don't cut down all of the open space. So there's the fire break piece near combustible structures, and then the Parks Department will take care of any of the, you know, the wildlife preserve areas and their adjacency to anything combustible.
Okay, thank you.
And so also, our focus is to take care of those areas, and then our city property first, right? Our city areas that are city-owned, and then we work with Jason's team, and they help us prioritize any of those locations that are private to work with that process that he was just describing.
Teamwork.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Rizza, you mentioned the rain, and you can't get equipment out there even if, right?
Yeah, one of the big things, too, and we send that in our notices, is we want property owners to know if they cut too early and those weeds return, they're gonna have to cut them again. So it's kind of a timing issue. We look at that last rain event, you know, and then hopefully there's a drying period to where, you know, the weeds will stop their growth, and then they could be cut. Otherwise, we are gonna request that those property owners cut it again. So it's kind of a, you know, just following a timeline as close as we can, and so we don't have to double-cut some of these areas.
Yeah, I mean, I know that some of my farmers couldn't even get, you know, in their rice fields, couldn't get their equipment out there until most recently. I want to follow up and make sure I understand on Vice Mayor Bernuscony's question. You know, there's a trail that I walk, and then there's a section that goes right up against the private property's fence line, right? That's our responsibility to cut that, not the, right? So I'm over in the Summer Hill neighborhood, and, you know, in that park, in that storm.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure it's that specific location, but, yeah, we do a lot of those locations. Some of them do get, are adjacent to private property locations, but we don't go into those private properties unless we're requested by the fire department.
But that's part of the trail.
Yeah, if it's part of the trail, we will cover that, and so that's typical.
So, yeah, and there is, I mean, boy, these managed wetlands, I've never seen them like that in the 30 years I've been around. There's a super bloom going on, and I'll apologize to everybody for praying for rain, and now Mother Nature, please stop, okay? I'll open it up for public comment. No public comment. I'll close public comment, and I'll close the public hearing. And unless there are other questions or comments by the council, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 10.3, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-141, ordering the destruction of or removal of all weeds, dirt, rubbish, and rank growth in the City of Roseville, and overruling any and all objections thereto. At this time, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Some moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll begin with Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Hadda Shelt.
Yes, and thanks for your presentation. All right, next up is item 10.4, Water, Waste Water, Waste Services Proposed Utility Rate Adjustment, Municipal Code revisions for fiscal year 2023-24 and fiscal year 2024-25. I'll open the public hearing and ask staff to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Hadda Shelt and members of the council. I'm Rich Plecker. I'm your Environmental Utilities Director. With me this evening is my colleague Devon Whittington, who's an assistant director. And Devon, with his team, are responsible for the majority of the work that leads up to tonight, so he's going to give our presentation.
Again, I'm Devon Whittington, Assistant Environmental Utilities Director. And first, I'd like to say that we've been talking about this since February, so we're finally to the point of end here. So I know a lot of people have heard these rates, and now you get to finally get the end result here. So this first slide that we have here is what do we think of when we're developing these rates? Customer impacts. What type of services do our residents want us to perform more of? For example, in the Way Services Utility, we really enhanced the household hazardous waste collection, which has added quite a bit of value. And then also in the Water Utility, we've increased some of our water efficiency services, too, which our residents greatly appreciate. We also have to ensure that we're covering debt. And then in earlier presentation, you saw Jason talking about infrastructure. That's one of our most costly and important things to produce reliability and resiliency for all of our systems. We need to ensure that we meet physical soundness, regulatory compliance for current and future regulations, and that the rate model and rate analysis itself is legal through the Prop 218. Outreach. Some of the outreach that we've done, of course, Prop 218 notice. Any of you that are homeowners or property owners in the City of Roseville will receive one of these. We dedicated a webpage specifically to rates. We engaged through social media. We put out an e-newsletter to all utility bill payers. Two public meetings. One was at Mahaney, the other was a virtual meeting. And then we also informed groups such as Sun City Government Affairs Group. And now the most important part here, so you'll see the rate impact for the next two years. So for the Water Utility, we were looking at a $2.10 increase for wastewater to $2.86 increase. And for the Waste Services Utility, you see a zero increase. And for next year, for July 1st of 2024, you will see an increase in the Water Utility of $2.17, and the Wastewater Utility of $3.03. Zero percent increase again for Waste Services, or I mean, zero dollar amount for Waste Services. What this articulates to from a percentage aspect is water will be a 4% overall revenue adjustment, and wastewater will be an overall 6% revenue adjustment.
I'm sorry, Devon, that's $2.10 a month, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as far as some of the major cost drivers, over the past two years, we experienced record inflation, right? So we've seen inflation hit things like chemicals. So in the Wastewater Utility, we saw a 60%, close to a 60% increase in chemical costs. We also see an increase in power costs. And in the Water Utility, a construction cost, so you guys hear us talking about the ASR wells constantly. Well, those ASR wells were scheduled to come in around $6 million. They actually came in around $10 million. Two years ago, we could purchase a waste collection truck or and/or garbage truck for $380,000. Now it's closer to $500,000. Another big piece of these rates is added value. We want to increase security at facilities. We want to meet regulatory requirements. We want to protect investments through rehabilitation of infrastructure. And we want to create a reliable water and wastewater system, and waste services system. So if you look at this bar chart here, this is a consolidated chart. This has all of our funds included in one chart. If you look at the current revenue, that is the yellow line, and if you look at the proposed revenue, that is the red line. line. And if you look at the proposed revenue, that is the red line. Now with the next slide, you'll see something very similar with the wastewater utility. So the wastewater utility, you're going to see that red line being the requested or proposed revenue adjustment that we have before you this evening. And then you'll also see that yellow line, which is our current revenue. The Waste Services utility, we're, we're going to be taking a two-year pause on rate adjustments, and that's for two reasons. Some of the costs through SB 1380, or SB 1383 haven't been fully realized yet. And in addition to that, we are also looking at the Advanced Clean Fleet Initiative, which was actually approved last Thursday. That will have a significant cost for not only Waste Services, because it's primarily trucks and routes, but all the utilities and the whole city. This is our regional rate comparison. So if you look at the dark blue, that's our current rates. If you look at the lighter blue, that is our proposed rates. And if you look at the gray, that is a comparison to our regional comparators. The next slide will actually have more detail on those regional comparators. So one thing to note is, we're not all the way at the bottom, but we're not all the way at the top either. So what we're looking for is to have the highest value utility in the region, not necessarily the cheapest and not necessarily the most expensive. So this is an affordability index. This is from AWWA. That's the American Waterworks Association. This is for water. You can see that we're the most affordable in this index nationally. And then for wastewater, you'll even see a more significant, so go ahead and go to the next slide. For wastewater, you'll even see a more significant trend for the most affordable nationwide. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd like to open up to any questions council may have. We do have a supporting cast of subject area experts here as well if we can't answer the questions you may have.
Councilwoman Rakucci, any questions?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
I have just a couple of quick questions. In, on the chart that has the bar graph for the Lions, 2025 and 2026, it looks like our operating expenses are going to drop. I was wondering if you could just explain what happens in that dip on both wastewater and water?
Absolutely. So the reason you see that drop is this is a consolidated draft or consolidated graph, and that includes rehabilitation. So for those years, we either have an increase in rehabilitation costs or a lower cost for rehabilitation.
So this is a lower?
Correct.
Year, but why it drops down?
Correct.
And then the other, when we're comparing the, to the different cities around us, I've heard rumor, but I guess they haven't officially released the results because I didn't see them on this, that, that one of our neighboring cities is jumping up quite a bit, like almost twice as much. I was curious, have you guys heard rumors like that, or?
So we have heard that same rumor. We've heard anywhere from 100% increase to 50% increase for some of their utilities. Yep.
Interesting if that takes place, because evidently we weren't able to record that yet because it's not official. So I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Bernasconi?
I don't have any questions.
Just one question, kind of following up on Councilman Albert's, you know, on this slide 11 where you compare the regional residential monthly rates, you know, it's, I think, I think a lot of this depends on the infrastructure and the service area. So, you know, Fair Oaks, I don't, I mean, they, they really don't compare to us, right, in size? I mean, as number of, number of customers they serve, Folsom certainly has a smaller footprint, right?
In, in some regards, I mean, it's a third of our size, perhaps?
Yeah. And another thing we're trying to do is we're trying to get a geographic area too. So we're kind of just kind of putting a circle around us and finding communities here.
Right.
Yep.
You know, so in Waste Services, we certainly have a lot more customers we have to serve. And so, you know, I think it's, it's hard to compare us with, you know, Rockland, which is a smaller footprint, right?
And Rockland's actually increasing rates, July 1st as well.
And just note, note that you have some asterisks here that represent what the current rates are and some that are the proposed rates. Okay. Thanks. That was, those were my questions. I'll open up for public comment, close public comment, close the public hearing. If there are no additional questions from the council, ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on item 10.4, the city council conducted tonight a public hearing to receive public comment regarding proposed rate adjustments effective July 1st, 2023, and July 1st, 2024. For water, wastewater, and Waste Services utility rates and associated amendments to the Roseville Municipal Code. And for tonight, we're introducing a, for a first reading, ordinances of the council of the city of Roseville, amending sections 9.12.030, 9.12.070, and 9.12.090 of chapter 9.12, and amending sections 9.17.040 of chapter 9.17 of Title IX regarding garbage, amending sections 14.08.090 and 14.08.100 of chapters 14.08. In addition, amending sections 14.16.200 of chapter 14.16, and amending sections 14.17.080 of chapter 14.17 of title 14 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding public utilities, fees, charges, and rates. At this time, may I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion. Florida, with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashelt.
Yes, and I love the graphics you used here. So.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We've come to the point in our agenda where we will open it up for a second round of public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none. Ask the city manager if he has anything.
No, no further reports, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. City attorney?
Same for me. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Albert, will you start us off on committee activities or anything else you want to report on?
You bet. Friday night, Councilmember Rakucci and I got to attend the second, 22nd Annual City Awards, and it's for police and fire, recognizing police and fire in several different categories. And I just, we were there representing the council, and it, it brings a lot of pride, I know, to our council, some of the excellent firefighters and officers and support staff that we have. And it's just a real joy to kind of be there with their families and cheering them on in some of these really nice awards they were receiving. And this last Sunday, our city got three new Eagles, and these were Boy Scout Eagles. And it was an honor to, to go and bring a, a document that was signed by the mayor and, and just congratulate them and be there with their families as they celebrated. I got to be interviewed by a couple of these gentlemen over the years for some of their merit badges. So it was just a neat thing to experience. On Monday, there was something really unique. I, I spent the morning out at MyDoo, and the Placer County Air Push and Control District sponsored a biomass symposium. And there was a couple hundred nerds there, I suppose the best way to say it, scientists, who talked about a lot of different ways of taking our forest waste and trimmings and sometimes other things, and converting them into energy or fuel for trucks. And it was just really interesting listening to all the different types of presentations that they had. And thought that was pretty cool. And it was neat that the air, air district welcomed them, because there's a lot of stuff that we would like to be able to use in a productive way. And they've got some just real creative ideas. Last night, there was a student speakers contest at the Lions Club, and there were four finalists that had been working their way up in these presentations. And I got to be one of the judges. And it was just really cool to listen to these professional, I think they were pretty much mostly seniors. And the winner got almost $5,000 in award money and is now advancing on to this higher level with the state for a $20,000 contest. And it just kind of brought some pride. One of them was from Antelope High. The other three were not even from our area, but it's just cool that the Lions Club is, is supporting this kind of a, a project. And then last Friday, early in the morning, or in the morning, there was a Make-A-Wish child, a 14-year-old young lady. And many Make-A-Wish recipients, they, they choose a wish that, for them, which is very normal. I mean, they're going through such a real difficult time. But this young lady chose to, to give away something. And so at Kaiser and the Women and Children's Center, she, she did some paintings in there, made it, she wanted to make it a more joyful place. And she, she had 10 new big screen TVs with sound, Bluetooth sound systems. It was just really a neat thing to be there with all the staff cheering through the window even. And, and again, there, there was a proclamation that was signed by our mayor that was given to her. It was just a neat thing to watch a, a young person give back to the community and make one of our major hospitals a brighter place for people going through a tough time. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bernasconi?
Thank you. Just a couple of things to share, and some of them might be things that you are on your plate too. So maybe I can either speak for all of us, or you feel like you can add to it. But the five of us council members were in DC home last week on the Metro Chambers advocacy program, about five days, meeting with agencies and our federal representatives. SAC Metro Chamber had the largest contingency ever in their program, more than 400 people. And SAC Metro does have the largest contingency in the United States of people that go every year. So I feel like that was time well spent for all of us. Some of us this afternoon were able to meet with one of the leaders within the Bosch organization, which has been big news since the last time that we met here. Certainly a game changer and a new beginning for TSI. I believe that he is the only employee within the United States. I understand that correctly.
Yeah, I think so.
So we all really look forward to their presence in our community and what that can bring. Just noting tonight, all the things that we covered on our agenda, from the road out in the Sierra Vista, finishing that, to Measure B, to the CIP, to block grants, and all of them string together, the, the goals and visions that we have for our city to make it an even better place to live. So I just wanted to note two other things. The Placer Veteran Stand Down is going to be really this Tuesday and Wednesday for full services at the grounds. Any veteran and their family can attend and receive free medical vision, dental care, as well as any minor sort of legal support that they might need. Even though services are Tuesday and Wednesday, some folks come from out of the area and they can stay on the property starting Monday evening. So I know that's initiative that our city supports as well. And our mayor has his mayor's cup on Friday. I believe it's, it's sold out. It's going to be a wonderful day. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to go and support you this year.
Oh, you're going to miss my outfit. I'm really, yeah.
But I trust you're going to have a fantastic time, and it's a great cause. And thanks to the Parks and Rec team for putting it together. It's a really fun event that brings out the community. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Bernasconi. Councilwoman Rakucci?
Yeah, I, I literally echo everything everybody said, so I'm just going to add up a little bit to it. I went to the police and fire celebration and awards night was put on by businesses and churches and residents in honor of the things that our police and fire do. And they, actually, they were picked by their own people. And so it was kind of like, here are three, three or four people, and the one who, you know, was chosen was this. But frankly, any of them could have been chosen because they all do good things. And it was nice to be able to see the families and see them talking to each other. And we're, I was introduced to some of the younger kids and some of the, our police resource officer that I talked to, but I've never seen him in person. And so it was really a, a nice event. And, and I think people just had a really good time. And the people who were serving had a good time because they really were glad to do something for our police and fire department. So it was, it was a pleasure for my husband and I to be there. And then I was going to mention the fact of last Vice Mayor Bernasconi said that we went to capital to capital. And many of us on our, were on different teams. We weren't on the same teams. I was on the water team and with a lot of regional people, because we're looking at what can we do as a region to help not only Roseville, but our, our region and California. So a lot of our discussions and people we talk to is about storage, and it could be underground, above ground, sites, reservoir, just different ways to be able to make, not just, we look at a Folsom reservoir, and just to be depending on that, reservoir needs help. And there's many ways that we can do it. And we found that with our aqua recharge and storage. And there's some really exciting things of working with our fellow purveyors that we could make Folsom Dam and the other dams work in ways that we just have to have new eyes, a new way to think about it. And I, yeah, I see when we go back there, there's actually people who are really interested in, like, next step. How funding's going to go, who knows? But the interest in understanding that we're doing this as a region, and many of these things really can work. And yes, we just got to meet Mr. Cero Brando from Bosch, Director of Technology Partnership Strategic Business Development. It was a pleasure to meet with him and what his company is looking to, to come and do. And right, TSI right now has about 250 employees, and he'll keep them on, and they'll be working there. And in the future, it could be a lot bigger, and we'll see what happens. But it was an opportunity to welcome him and his company to come to Roseville. And looking forward, a real exciting, we've had, we've had NEC, we've had HP, we've had TSI, we've had other companies. And having, having Bosch here is, is absolutely wonderful. It's good for our community, for, for jobs, and for what they will be doing for, with their product for California and for the nation.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any updates. I haven't already been covered by my fellow council members. So thank you.
Great. I'll pick up on the cap to cap advocacy. I, I was on the transportation. I was on Food NAG. Had an opportunity, Roseville Electric asked me to go over and talk with National Association of Home Builders. You were there last year. So it was a follow-up with thank yous and that the need is still there with transformers, you know. I think the last supply of transformers we got was in 2022. It's vital to the infrastructure here in the city of Roseville. They get it. So we had an opportunity to chat with the same people you had an opportunity to chat with last year. And, you know, the power of this advocacy is when, on Saturday, a number of folks that are on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency met with PCTPA's new lobbyist, who happens to be Roseville's lobbyist, Mike Miller, with the TFG group, the TFG, the Ferguson Group. And, you know, he said, you know, the power of you being there and reinforcing the writ and ask by being there, you know, sometimes tips the scale. We already got news that Senator Padilla is including some PCWA Roseville project up in the Middle Fork, $5 million. He's going to include that, and $3 million for Barton Road Solar. I think Adventure Club is on Senator Padilla's watch list. So the power of us going there, the power of the region and, and making that connection. I'll tell a quick story. I walked into Senator Padilla's office. His staff assistant said, oh, you're the mayor of Roseville? Oh, my in-laws are from Roseville. Can we take a picture? Sure. And then, you know, I followed up and just said, hey, if, you know, if your in-laws have any, you know, any questions or concerns, just, you know, make sure they get in touch with us. So it's very powerful. And, and, you know, I know, you know, each of us on our teams, whether it was law enforcement, civic amenities, economic development, or water, had similar experiences. So that, that really is good. And Councilman Albert, thanks for going last night. I was at South Kirby Neighborhood Association, talking with them about our council priorities and, and listening to them on, on things, just giving them a general overview. Right before we went to cap to cap, the SECOG Board of Directors has begun meeting outside of the city of Sacramento. So they came to Roseville to the Boys and Girls Club, and Board of Directors was, was there, had an opportunity to provide some opening comments to some opening comments to them. And they were, they were well received. Cap to cap, Mayor's Cup, it's the 60th anniversary. And thank you to Parks and Rec for taking it out of Wood Creek Oaks and recognizing Diamond Oaks is celebrating the 60th. And there's going to be a prize for the team, and I'm not eligible, for the team that is most dressed like 1960s vintage golfers. I found my hat today, but I'm not eligible. I now have to find the loud pants and the collars that are over, over and stuff. So anyway, Board of Directors, cap to cap. And the last thing, and I will get this wrong, so my apologies, but our Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec last year was a finalist in its category. I forget the category, but it's based on population, a finalist for an award. Now, even though we've grown and we're outside that category, once again, we're a finalist for the gold medal. All right. Thank you. And that's just, you know, oh, jeez, I almost forgot the most important thing. You know, I had an opportunity this morning, you know, it's May is bike month, you know, encouraging bikes. And part of, part of that was safe routes to schools. So I had an opportunity to stand with Crossing Guard and Bob Doyle at Chilton Middle School. And wow, the connectivity of our trail system, there were kids going to Junction, there were kids going to West Park, there were kids going to Chilton, right? It was a very busy trail. And that was really a wonderful opportunity this morning. And I think it is, it tells you how that integration of our trail system with our amenities and our specific plan lead to a quality of life that is the reason why people are pretty darn happy to be here and not someplace else. That's enough of me tonight. If there's nothing else to come before us, we'll adjourn till, I mean, 10/17, right?
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned.
Thank you.